Bring up.
That's awesome.
It'd be fun, right?
I don't remember really doing it.
All right, I'm gonna organize it just so we can have your gut to. Oh, yeah. Hit those. Oh, don't forget the soup, don't forget the chili. I'll make clam chowder.
No, that's yours.
My specialty. Oh, I'm French.
I have to do this in groups because I made.
This is not expected to be.
Six pounds, over six pounds of the show.
Okay. How big is your cup?
I have three of them.
How did you get six pounds of your cup?
I have a pot this big.
No, with the chairs of each of us.
That I make myself because I.
Yeah, yeah.
You want, you want, you're gonna just have the chair?
Do we have someone that's gonna be on Zoom or why is that up?
No, I see.
You don't need to fight that hard over it.
You asked Dave whether we could do this.
Also, no difference?
Oh, sixty-two.
Okay.
You'd have to beat it.
I don't know. I don't know what that is.
So easy, bitch.
He's French.
I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty P. M. in the Aldemantic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by city, Deputy City Clerk Roger Ordway, Jr., and Alderman Goveya will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here.
Twelve present.
Thank you very much. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Council Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the void of the meeting?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. Well, I wanted to mention a few things. First, I'm sure you all noticed or probably noticed that on the annual Wallet Hub survey, Nashua moved up from the second safest city in the country to the first safest city in the country. Now, this is due to a lot of people. Of course, our police and fire departments do a great job, but the areas in which the community is ranked or rated are, of course, home and community safety, also disaster risk and financial safety. One score, one area where we scored very high is a very low level of assaults, person-on-person, I think the second lowest of the one hundred and eighty-eight cities. But our city employees work very hard every day to support and serve our citizens, and I know our citizens are also working hard to make this the best community they can. So we owe, I think, thanks for this to many, many people in the city, and I think we can all be proud of it. Second, Madam President, I wanted to update you on some of the progress we're making regarding the issue of housing in the city. The Monahan Manor is scheduled, they hope, to open the first phase of their two hundred and sixteen units, in other words, about seventy units, this coming week. There always are delays in this environment, in this economy, so we, they expect to be able to make it, but if they don't, it will be very soon thereafter, and that would own, open the first seventy units to families in the community who, of course, need affordable housing. The school street housing, I met with people there today, that is a hundred and fifty units on High Street, they're calling it the High Street Lofts. They believe they will be able to open in December. They've had a few delivery problems and other issues with the elevators, but they still are looking at a, at least right now, at a December opening. NIMCO, which is a city-owned site over in the Mill Yard, the, we have received three very credible proposals from various, from three credible developers, different ideas. We have an interview team internally that has interviewed all three of those developers. They have now, they, the builders have visited the site and had a chance to look at it, which could alter the proposals a bit, and there are going to be follow-up discussions with them. Eventually, the team of people who are interviewing this group, these groups, will make a recommendation to me, and we will recommend to you how we think you should proceed in making sure that housing gets developed on that site. You might have noticed that at two forty-nine Main Street, right down the street, the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Works project is proceeding very quickly, and it's going up right now. That will be forty-six units of affordable housing. And finally, another one that's on the drawing board now is the Housing Authority, and the city are working to develop a proposal for Maynard Homes Veggie Village area, similar to what you see at Monahan Manor, where a smaller number of units, about a hundred, would be redeveloped into four to five hundred for an additional three to four hundred families. And this week, we will be sending a letter of support for that project to the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, which is the main entity that provides financing, provides the capital on a loan basis for these affordable housing projects, and we believe that that project can be a very big success. Another item, Madam President, I'm sure you've all noticed, Main Street is now paved after all of the utility work that was done, and as, as icing on the cake or a cherry on the, on the sundae or whatever it is, the railroad crossing was improved by the, by CSX, so that it's much smoother crossing there now, something that, I mean, people have been working for, for decades, really, and now that is an improved situation as well. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention that tomorrow night at six o'clock, Alderwoman Karen is hosting an informational meeting at Dr. Chris Gould regarding the Crown Street Encampment, and that will kick off, and we'll have a number of city people there to meet with residents to talk about, talk about that. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. And response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm on that committee for the NIMCO Propagating along with Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Como, and I can tell you that a lot of great projects, if any one of them is gonna be great for the city, really neat ideas, and I don't want to speak for Alderman O'Brien, but I think he might share those views with me, but it'll definitely grow housing, no matter which one comes about, but it's a great look that could be coming to the city soon. Additionally, on the Crown Street Encampment, I'll definitely be there along with many other aldermen. I hope everyone takes an opportunity to come down and listen and answer, ask questions so they can be answered, and Alderman Lopez and I will be holding a joint PEDC and Human Affairs Committee on the issue as well on Tuesday, October seventeenth here in the Aldemantic, at seven P. M. here in the Aldemantic Chamber.
Alderman Lopez.
As Alderman Moran just mentioned, there is a meeting next week, a joint committee meeting on Tuesday to address homelessness encampment issues, and I will be attending that. I was asked to attend the Crown Hill meeting, but I also recognize that this is a Neighborhood Ward meeting, and I don't want to take any attention from them. If they want to be asking questions and learning more about the issues, then the last thing they need is like a plus one from, from me. If anybody has any questions or anything, if I can help point them towards organizations that are helpful, then I'm always willing to, to do that, so feel free to reach out. Additionally, I wanted to comment on the number-one safety, because I made a similar comment last year. Last year, a friend of mine was murdered right before we got the safest in the city, and this year I find myself in a similar situation where two people were unfortunately shot two hundred feet from here. So we need to give ourselves credit when we do something well, and I think what we do well is our police department. They were right on the ball when it came to that. They investigated right away, they were able to stabilize the individual, prevent any further harm to the community, and ultimately, I think, were very reassuring to the community in the speed and professionalism that they responded. I think it would have been tone deaf on my part not to comment, and I had meant, had intended to make my comments, my Aldemantic comments, but while we do have crime here in Nashua, and that number-one safest place to live isn't saying nothing bad ever happens here, it is recognizing all of the hard work that our police do, all the hard work that our city departments do to try to promote public safety planning and to respond to things that preemptively, rather than waiting for things to, to get out of control.
Anyone else? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, show me a better police or fire department, right? They do a fantastic job, and, I mean, there's a reason why we're the number-one city for safety, and it goes along with them, it goes along with our public officials, public health officials, I should say, and other city departments such as DPW that do the work that makes sure there, there is safety out there, and I think that's, that's a testament to what Nashua has been able to do over the years. The last thing is, I just wanted to mention that there's also a apartment building going up, and it looks like it's pretty close to being done on Pine and Lake Street, on the corner of Pine and Lake, and so that's gonna offer, I don't know if it's twenty units, thirty units, but another additional units to Nashua for housing. Thank you.
Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of September twenty-fifth and September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Director Tim Cummings regarding communication approval and place on file a contract for KAMA software implementation through Vision Government Solutions. Communication has been received from CFO Treasurer-Tax Collector John L. Griffin regarding purchase of DPW twenty twenty-three Toro Outcross ninety-sixty. Communication has been received from Energy Manager Doria Brown regarding brief update regarding Resolution R. twenty-three one oh seven.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I have two people that signed up, I have four people that signed up, but two people are, Laura Calhoun, O. twenty-three sixty-two is not being acted upon this evening, and Wayne Seiya, the Resolution twenty-three one sixty-five is also not being acted upon this evening. If you want to stay and comment at the second comment period, you're welcome to do so. So we do have Lori Oralano.
Lori Oralano, forty-one Berkeley Street. I'm just here to do a quick comment on R. twenty-three one fifty-four, which is the transfer of money from the assigned fund balance for four hundred and twenty-five thousand over to property casualty self-insured, and this, I believe, had to do with the public hearing you had for the ransomware issue. I would like to ask if the board would be, or the administration would be so kind, is when you list these appropriations, if you would tell us what account they're coming out of. The assigned fund balance account is not something I was familiar with on where you find that, and I did have to write an email to CFO Griffin, and he did answer me, but that's not always the case, and I know that the city would prefer I ask fewer questions than more, and I will ask fewer questions if you would put the accounts on it, where it's coming from, because the assigned fund balances, technically, it's an account called Assigned for Future Liabilities, and it has eleven million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, and actually, Ms. Calhoun and I were looking at that account, trying to figure out what that was. We didn't realize that was the Assigned Fund Balance, because it's not actually called that. So, you know, I'd ask, when you do these large movements of money, that you actually specify the amount and the account it came from, if possible, because then it prevents me from having to ask questions. Also, I listened to the budget hearing where there was some discussion from aldermen wanting to get more details on the spending on this ransomware attack, and I think, to me, there was a legitimate question in there from a citizen's standpoint, and I would be interested in tracking how much money we've spent. We have Charles River Consulting Services, which we've given, I don't know, maybe close to half a million dollars to, no, more, probably three-quarters of a million dollars to. We have these large transfers that we've done, and I think the money transfers ought to be public. I would agree that your discussions in non-public about the strategies and how you're addressing that are closed issues and confidential and can be maintained that way, but I actually think the spending and the authorization of that spending, and since that spending is in the expenditure report, I think we ought to be able to get an accounting of that, so that if I put in a request and said, how much money has been spent so far on this ransomware attack, you could give me the data on just the spending. So I'd like you to consider that, and maybe somebody let me know why that's not possible. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Vision Government Solutions.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve, place on file, and award a multi-year contract for KAMA software implementation for assessing consulting services with Vision Government Solutions in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, or approximately fifty thousand annually. Funding will be through Department one thirty-two assessing Fund eight one three four two Computer Software and Hardware Capital Projects.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding tax increment finance development program Thornton Thomasetti.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve, place on file, and award a contract for professional services related to the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project for the structural design of the substations, substation screening structure and performance pavilion of the Riverfront Project with Thornton Thomasetti in the amount of a hundred and six thousand, five hundred dollars. Funding will be through Department one eighty-three Economic Development Fund five three one zero seven Architect and Engineering Services General Fund.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding million-dollar contract award Northeast Earth Mechanics.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve, place on file, and award a contract for construction of the Drywell Upgrade Project with Northeast Earth Mechanics LLC of Pittsfield, New Hampshire, in an amount not to exceed six million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Funding will be through Department one six nine Wastewater Fund five four two one zero Construction Services, SRF loan.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding purchase of a front-end loader in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents funded from eight one five zero zero.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Toro Outcross ninety-sixty front-end loader from Turf Product Corporation in the amount of a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen eighty-nine cents. Funding will be through Department one seven seven Parks and Recreation Fund eight one five zero zero Vehicle slash Zero.
Heard that motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award United Site Services.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve, place on file, and award the contract for portable toilet rentals with United Site Service for a two-year term in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two, fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six annually. Funding will be through Department one seven seven Parks and Recreation Fund five four eight two one Equipment Rental slash General Fund, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve annually, and Fund five four two eight one Equipment Rental slash Trust, five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four annually.
Heard that motion, discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Citizens Advisory Commission, we have Jennifer Bishop as a reappointment, term to expire November first of twenty twenty-six, three fifty-nine B. Main Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, zero three zero six zero, and Lisa Toringway, reappointment, term to expire October first of twenty twenty-six, eleven Berkeley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, zero three zero six four.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor's right and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R. twenty-three one oh seven authorizing an amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement of Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
Alderman Tebow.
I move for final passage of R. dash twenty-three dash one zero seven.
Heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-three one oh seven is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R. twenty-three one fifty-four relative to the supplemental appropriation of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of fiscal year twenty twenty-three Assigned Fund Balance into Department one twenty-eight Risk Management Account eight nine six five zero Transfer to Property and Casualty Self-Insurance Fund.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. twenty-three one fifty-four by a roll call pursuant to Chapter Section forty-nine.
You've heard the mo.
Charter, Section forty-nine.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, with Clerk Colerole.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Total thirteen.
Thank you. That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-three one fifty-four is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R. twenty-three one sixty-four authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at one Edwards Street.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R. dash twenty-three dash one sixty-four, and may I speak briefly?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Those that went to the infrastructure meeting knows that this passed the committee unanimously. I do not want, do not want to get into the particulars of this because of the confidentiality and respect to the people that are involved, but it goes to prove, when we looked at these properties, that we were hoping that some amicable solutions would come forward, and this is such an example of that. So I recommend that you do approve of this motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Further discussion? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. The last time we had something like this come up, I had constituents ask why I voted no on a series of them. I just wanted to let the public at large know that I don't support the government taking residential properties, and regardless of owed taxes, I think, you know, it can stay in someone's hands until the, the day that whoever dies, and then we can take it. I don't know the details, because this is, was held in closed session, I wasn't present, but you'll see me supporting us taking commercial properties, but I won't support taking residential. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-three one oh seven is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O. twenty-three zero sixty authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone Three, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December eleventh of twenty twenty-three through January first of twenty twenty-four.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of O. dash two-three dash zero six zero, and I'd like to be heard on it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this is something that the city does on an annual basis, ever since I've been an alderman, and I'm sure it's been done for many years before, where in order to encourage people to come downtown for Christmas shopping, we allow free parking in Zone Three, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages, and if anybody has any doubt or question as to where Zone Three is, you can go to the city website, and under maps, there's a parking map, and it tells you exactly where Zone Three is. I find it interesting that I was chosen to make this motion, because I think I'm the only one who didn't sign up to endorse it. So I think it's going to pass, so I encourage all of you who endorsed it to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance twenty-three zero sixty is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R. twenty-three one sixty-five adopting the use of new electronic ballot counting devices.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of R. twenty-three one sixty-six approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Public Works of the City of Nashua, New Hampshire, and Local three sixty-five of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight, and authorizing related transfers.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R. twenty-three one sixty-seven approving the city's participation in the New Hampshire Public Works Mutual Aid Program and authorizing the Related Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O. twenty-three zero six-two amending the land use code regarding the wetlands buffer for vernal pools.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Goveya. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing at the Planning and Economic Development Committee on Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at seven P. M.
First reading of O. twenty-three zero six-three authorizing stop signs at the intersection of Charlotte Street and Beauview Avenue.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Okay, period for public comment, general public comment. First, I have Mike O'Connell.
Yeah, thank you. It's Michael O'Connor. I live at forty-two Berkeley Street, and thank you. So this year's prestigious First Amendment Award from the Loeb School of Communications was announced last Friday. Many citizens of Nashua will be pleased with the two thousand twenty-three First Amendment Award Honoree. I read from that award announcement. Lori Ordolano of Nashua, New Hampshire is the two thousand twenty-three First Amendment Award Honoree for her advocacy for government transparency. This award from the NACI S. Loeb School of Communications honors New Hampshire individuals or groups that have advanced or exercised their First Amendment rights in some special or extraordinary way. Ordolano's commitment to open government has been unwavering since her first encounters with right-to-know requests as a member of the Litchfield School Board in the early two thousands, where transparency was embraced without legal disputes. However, her move to Nashua in two thousand twenty-fourteen marked the beginning of a different journey. City officials in Nashua have met Ordolano's numerous right-to-know requests for tax assessment, finance, and development information with denials, court battles, and even an arrest for criminal trespassing when she visited City Hall during the pandemic without an appointment. The arrest was later annulled. Undeterred by these challenges, she has consistently taken her fight to court, accumulating legal fees and costs totaling two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Her persistence has paid off with victories in three cases, two cases still pending, and three awaiting judgments from the State Supreme Court. In two thousand twenty-three, a Superior Court judge ordered the city to pay Ordolano sixty-three thousand, four hundred in legal fees, and mandated that the city, the Nashua City officials undergo remedial right-to-know training-
One minute.
...to avoid future violations. The city appealed to the State Supreme Court. In August, the justices upheld Ordolano's victory. In their decision, they quoted a portion of the state's right-to-know law. The purpose of the right-to-know law is to ensure both the greatest possible public access to the actions, discussions, and records of all public bodies, and their accountability to the people.
Thirty seconds.
So congratulations, Mrs. Ordolano, and thank you. Adding my personal comments, Mrs. Ordolano has bravely persisted despite many hostile and erroneous comments from some here, and even a psychobabble slanderous diagnosis from one unprofessional alderman. Alderpersons, it's not that complicated. Mrs. Ordolano and other citizen activists have a right to know. The city has a duty to comply with New Hampshire law. It shouldn't take Superior Court, Supreme Court judges to remind you. Thank you.
Mike Ordolano?
Michael Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. I'm not quite as famous as my wife, but I occasionally like to make comments here. I came out in response to some of the video that I watched on the Finance Committee, and in particular, there was a comment made by one of the aldermen that's like, hey, there can't be any fraud here because it's audited, and I just wanted to make sure that people understand that just because something is audited doesn't mean there's no fraud. I mean, audits are based on information provided to them, you know, typically by management. They can do sample testing, they can do things, but, you know, there have been many, many examples of serious fraud cases. Enron just completely collapsed, WorldCom, there's many instances where high-powered audit firms just couldn't detect the fraud. A lot of times, it's related to complex structures, you know, and of course, this Art Center, you know, Center for the Performing Arts thing has gotten a lot of visibility because of its complicated structure that is being used. You know, I would encourage the city to, to get to the bottom of just opening up the financial transactions so that they're visible to the world and we can resolve this, this fraud issue, because that certainly is, is a structure that makes it difficult to maintain accountability on, and anyways, I wanted to make sure that, that the public listening to the meeting, you know, if they don't have a financial background, they wouldn't get, you know, basically skewed into believing, hey, with an audit, there's no chance of fraud. Nothing could really be further from the truth. Thank you, Michael Ordolano.
Laura Cahoon?
Laura Cahoon, thirty Greenwood Drive. On March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, I emailed Mr. Griffin and said, I think there's another seven-point-one-million-dollar loan. At that time, we went back and forth, back and forth, until August, because I kept on asking where it was on the books, and August he'd get back to me, and he said, well, we're going to put it in May. To me, that is fraud. We gave that loan out in December of two thousand twenty, and you don't put it on the books until May of two thousand twenty-three. That is fraud, okay? It's a deception against the Nashua residents. So, Mayor, if you want to say it's not, that's fine, but to me, it's fraud. That, that loan should have gone on, and then now you have the nerve to put it on the books as a loan, and you write it off on the same month while still collecting interest from that loan. I think that's, that's absolutely absurd, and I hope somebody, somewhere is looking into this, because somebody should be charged with fraud because they did, they penetrated it against the Nashua residents. Thank you.
David Vains?
Yes. David Vains, thirty-five Abbott, number one. I'm very happy to see all this affordable housing coming. I'm very happy they fixed the railroad finally. I saw two derailments. You know, I feel happy and safe here, and that's all I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Bill Ferrero?
My name is Bill Ferrio. My home is number thirty-five Indian Rock Road. So last month, I sent email to the alderman and the mayor asking for help with a problem with my assessment that I couldn't seem to get corrected by working with the assessing department. That's what I want to talk about tonight. So like everybody else, my house was assessed by Vision during the two thousand twenty-two evaluation. That was supposed to be developed based on actual sale prices within a specific period of time. When I got mine, I did a comparison to actual sales prices of similar homes, and I found an error. The vision model didn't accurately reflect my home, didn't accurately assess my home. So I reported that error to the assessing department by filing an abatement. So the city agreed with me that there was an error with the vision assessment. It was wrong. It wasn't accurate, but the city used a different process to correct the error. They don't go into the vision model and correct it. They use this simple spreadsheet calculation. So they reduced my assessment because they agreed that it was wrong. They presented the reduced assessment to the Board of Assessors, and the Board of Assessors approved it. But it's still wrong, and it's wrong because the city's process doesn't use recent sales prices as the vision model does. It uses appreciated sales prices. They appreciate the sales price by as much as ten percent. How is that ever going to be equitable? How is that ever going to be fair? The guy that doesn't have an error in his vision assessment, and he doesn't appeal, his house is compared to actual sales data. The guy that does file an abatement because his is wrong, he's assessed a ten percent penalty. That's crazy. How is that ever going to be equitable? So I spoke to the Board of Assessors about what was done, and they listened, and they, I think they understood part of it. So they asked the assessing department to go back in-
One minute.
...and come up with a response. So the response from the assessing department was a lot of definitions about different processes, but it didn't really justify the fact that I was being penalized for appealing. They were treating my appeal as a reason to assess using a different process that uses totally different comparison prices. I'm just asking to fix what Vision's error was. I didn't ask to be treated by, different than everybody else, by raising the bar. I don't believe I'm going to be able to resolve this problem with the assessing department. So I know I have other avenues to appeal this, but I'm still asking the mayor or one of the aldermen to step up and show some responsibility for this. So it was interesting that the only response I got from my email last month was from a woman named Emily from the mayor's office, and she wrote, and I'm quoting what she said specifically, "She understood my frustration, Bill, and they would help if they could, Bill, and she wished me luck, Bill." So she seems to be in absolute agreement with my problem, but she also wrote that nobody has any say-
Time.
-in how the assessing department operates. That, that's bizarre. Can someone please step up and help me fix this problem? Thank you.
Wayne Sayah?
Honorable Mayor Donches, Madam President, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Wayne Sayah. I, I live in a townhouse at twenty-four Cattigan Way in Nashua, and I haven't been in this chamber for twenty-five years when I argued on behalf of my six-year-old daughter at that time, so I'm, I'm very happy to be here. I have two very minor issues. One is that there is a, an issue in the New Hampshire Supreme Court right now with regard to voting machines, and whether or not they should be allowed in New Hampshire. So, and for any vote with regard to an electronic machine, I would ask that you table that until any decision from the New Hampshire Supreme Court comes down. And so I'm making my objection right now for any type of machine being approved until the cases are resolved within New Hampshire. The second item is with regard to a litigation that I had filed a couple of years ago when I was going through a cardiac issue relative to the face masks. And currently, there, the new law with regard to face masks in Nashua is, I believe it's twenty-one dash oh-sixty-five, and that is with regard to volunteer, businesses have the right to volunteer whether or not they should require masks or not require masks. The federal district court indicated that they believed, without ruling on that one particular issue, they believed that the ordinance was voluntary without getting, without making a decision one way or the other. I, I, I think you'll agree with me on that. I think it's Steve, or Mr. Bolton.
One minute.
And, and so I would ask that if, if an issue comes down with regard to face masks again, rather than put businesses in a, in a position where they have to go and rely upon an ordinance, as soon as they reply to an ordinance, oh-sixty-five, that opens the business up to litigation and allows me to go right back into the federal court again. I'm asking for oh-sixty-five-
Thirty seconds.
...to be rescinded. Finally, I believe there was a third issue, and I apologize for this, I'm not used to coming here. I'm on a plane again tonight. With, I was here earlier today looking for a copy of the, of the O., of the two thousand twenty-two final report for, I guess they call it an audit report, but here it's called an annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending two thousand twenty-two. I couldn't get an answer today on getting a copy of that. I wanted to look at a couple of line items on that.
Sorry, your time is up.
And, is that my copy?
Well, it's copy, but yours now.
You, you must have known I was coming today. Well, look, I thank you very much, and look, congratulations on, on the news today with regard to Nashua being the safest.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
All right, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. I wanted to address the audit report that was given out, and I have some real concerns with it, and I hope the auditor will come back and present it again to the Budget Committee once it's a final report. It was really never announced in the Budget Committee that that was a draft copy. It's not marked draft anywhere, it's not online because it's not done, and at the very end, Mr. McIntyre said, when we submit the final copy and it's formatted correctly, you'll see a lot of this fixed. When is the final copy coming out? Because people have asked me that, and it isn't online, and I think it's reasonable for us to have that answer. So also, I think that it was a shame that all of you were given a two-hundred-plus-page book that night, and you were asked to speak on it when it was placed in your hand two minutes before the discussion happened. Nobody even cracked the binder, and there wasn't a single intelligent question from any of these Budget Committee, excuse me, Finance Committee members to speak on it because no one knew what they were even looking at. I would encourage you to take a really close look at the letters submitted by Melanson this year or Markham LLC. It's a different letter than what's been in your book in the past. It is not the same letter. Very much, they use a form letter, three pages long. This letter's four pages. I am particularly concerned about a statement in here that says, that's changed now. We are required to communicate with those charged with governance regarding, among other matters, the planned scope and timing of the audit, significant audit findings, and certain internal control-related matters that we have identified during the audit. Well, there's been a lot of public interest about the seven-point-one-million-dollar loan, how the Art Center is actually accounted for in the budget, because it was a complex transaction. Is it a public-private partnership? Is it on books? Is it off books? No one will answer those questions. That's not transparency. But when they say, we are required to communicate with those charged, I have a big problem with that. What does that mean? They can have a private meeting with the CFO, Griffin, and the mayor, and share the communications on what they think might be wrong with our internal controls? Because I think it ought to be disclosed and documented, and part of the governing body would be the Board of Aldermen, and I think it should be disclosed. An auditor should disclose that as the public record. This is municipal government. These aren't private meetings to have. So I would encourage you to look very closely at these letters, and also, the Gatsby eighty-seven issue for causing lateness in this is really bogus. Manchester had the same thing they had to institute, and their audit was out by April. What caused us to not have an audit out even now? It's not done. There's another story here, and I believe Ms. Cahoon's digging into that loan was part of that story, and there's been a lot of communications between the Finance Office and the Accounting Office on that loan, and I think it should be made public. Thank you.
Remaxed by members of the board? Stuck over here. Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to thank the deputy city clerk, Mr. Ordway, for sitting in tonight, and while I will embarrass him, I'd like to also wish a happy birthday to Alderman Moran. And at the, at the meeting regarding the, the audit, it was, it was stated that the, it needed to be reformatted properly, but that the numbers would remain exactly the same, and Alderman Dowd can corroborate that that was exactly what was, was said, that there was no, they wanted to get it to us as quickly as they could, but they did have some formatting issues. They did explain that more than once at, at the meeting. And also, relative to R. Twenty-three, one sixty-five, I did speak to our, this will come out when, when it actually comes in, in front to the, to, to the, the appropriate committee, but I did speak to our city clerk. There will be paper ballots. This has been approved by the state, one of two companies did in fact, were approved. The company we chose was the larger company, had a, a better record, and so on, so it has been completely vetted, and while I do respect the concerns of the other citizens, I don't want to delay this because we do have other elections coming up in probably January, and it's going to take a little while and so on to get this. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Alderman Klee, for wishing me a happy birthday, and I know others have messaged me. Apparently, you can't comment directly on my page, but thank you all for reaching out. Appreciate it. I'm, I think I'm twenty-three, twenty-four this year. I can't keep track anymore. Just slightly younger than Alderman Govea. I wanted to express my sympathy and support to the people of Israel who were attacked by Hamas terrorists. who were attacked by Hamas terrorists over the weekend. You know, it's horrible, the stories that I've been reading about children being beheaded, parents defending their children who were locked in safe rooms from terrorists who were looking to kidnap and parade people and just dehumanize them. It was horrible. There's no excuse for that type of vicious attack. I'm no supporter of Benjamin Netanyahu and his far-right government. But I can tell you, I support the people of Israel and their right to defend themselves. It reminded me of 9/11, the terrorist attacks on civilians. And that is not how you fight a war. That's not how you make your purpose or respond to any type of injustice you feel you've had. You don't murder children. You don't kidnap children, elderly, and parade them through the streets naked. It's unacceptable, and Israel has every right to defend themselves, no matter who's in charge over there. That's not to say I don't support the legitimate government of Palestine. But still, you reap what you sow. I'd also like to express my sympathies to Board of Education Jessica Brown on her recent loss to her family, of her husband's sudden death. Very difficult to hear. I heard that. I've met Jessica several times. I've held her sign way back when, when she was running for the Board of Education. Very sad to hear. Wow, I've really brought down the room. Also, thank you to the member of the public who pointed out that my statements had no credibility. That really helps when you're looking at damages. So I'm glad that that's now a part of the public record. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I just want to thank my colleagues, Alderman Cle and Alderman Timmons, for attending the vigil that we held last week for the deaths of Patricia Swett and Matthew Champagne. As I mentioned earlier, we celebrate all the things we do right in the city, but that doesn't help the people who struggle with what we haven't done right or what we were unable to stop. And I know the families there are very understanding. I mean, these terrible things happen to people, but it does rock the community. I know that people living on Maple Street were feeling very, very unheard and very, very alone when this was all happening. And having that vigil, I think, was helpful for giving people a forum and an ability to be heard. I also want to thank Mayor Donches particularly for attending, saying some words. I think it was helpful. So while I agree we have a lot of things to be very proud of here in Nashua, there's still a lot of work to do. And there will always be people who feel like this isn't the safest place for them. And this is the people that we need to reach out to the most and make sure that they do feel like they're welcome here, and they do feel like they're heard. And this is a place that's welcoming for all. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I want to make a couple of comments about downtown. I think that the paving in the railroad has greatly increased the ability to get around, so that was nice. Looking forward to Holiday Parking. If you can come downtown and shop local, it's always a great way to connect with the community. I also had the pleasure of going to the York Grill that just opened. Great food. They're right here by City Hall. And I know that Coffee and Kindness will also be opening on Saturday. So lots of really great stuff going on downtown. And then I just wanted to comment that I will be attending Alderman Karen's meeting tomorrow. I think the housing forum is an important topic, and I am looking forward to listening and hearing what the residents have to say and what the government is bringing to the table as well. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Just real quickly, as the liaison of the Police Department, I know they're a vast part of making us one of the safest cities to live in. I know that they interface with Homeland Security, Secret Service, FBI, State Police, Mass Police, DEA. They do a fantastic job of keeping the drugs off the street here in Nashua. And we have a phenomenal fire department as well that reacts to fires and puts them out extremely quickly in saving lives and property. And I think that it takes the type of budgets that we've been passing to keep that. And I don't think that anyone wants us to be degraded as one of the safest cities by reducing the budget inadvertently. So just wanted to say that. Also, my condolences to Jessica Brown. It's a very tragic loss. We don't always agree, but certainly can agree in the sympathy for her loss.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start off by also sending my condolences to the Brown family. They live not too far away from me down the road. Terrible. And a little bit more happier of a note, I want to thank everybody for all the Ward 1 residents and even some Ward 2 who came across of Amherst Street for our Ward 1 meeting last Tuesday at Broad Street. It was great. Want to thank Director Sullivan for coming in and answering some questions from the group we had there. It was a really productive night. A lot of people got their questions answered, so that was a good one. Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick note about tomorrow's meeting. I was able to work with Director Bagley so that we could have those departments and agencies that are responsible for the homeless and the problem that they were having down on Temple Street to move them over to Crown Street. So they will be having a discussion to tell the neighbors what exactly is going on and what they're doing. I had a list of questions, and I kept getting more. So we felt that having a meeting was the right thing to do for the neighborhood, because unfortunately, social media can say things that are not true, and then they get expanded, and then no one knows what's going on. Then after that, we will have a question and answer. So I just want you to be aware that, you know, that's how our meeting's going to go, because we certainly want to hear from the neighbors. We want to be able to assure them that what they're doing at this point in time is the right thing on a temporary basis. Because as I've said to other people, "There by the grace of God, go I." So I appreciate that you want to be in attendance, and I think that's great, because it's a great support to the city to figure out how we can help the homeless within our community. Thank you.
Alderman Tibo.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to Alderman Karen for having that community meeting tomorrow. I got to work, so unfortunately, I will not be there. But I really hope that residents come, and there's good questions, and there's good support from the community. So just a couple of things. Last week, we attended some of the candidates, which are a lot of us here today, attended an Affordable Housing Forum by Near Faith Council at the Unitarian Universalist Church. I thought it was a really productive evening of hearing all the different views on affordable housing and listening to a few of the residents that have had, you know, lots of trouble with either rent or being able to buy a house or, you know, just having their rent go up and being forced out of the city. And I thought there was a lot of good, it was a good community, because you had candidates from all sides, not just from one side. So I just want to thank them for that evening. I thought it was a good showing. I think, you know, usually, I'm not a big one for wanting to take houses away from people. But I think this Edwards one, without going into any detail, actually helps out the person that owns it. So it was kind of the reverse of what we've done in the past with taking these houses. So I just wish we would have been able to go into more detail about that so people knew exactly what was going on. And lastly, so a comment made in public comment was definitely directed at me, because I did ask the auditors if there was, you know, if they thought there was any fraud there. And they said, no. And then I clearly said, hey, they said there's no fraud there. Is that 100% guaranteed? No, nothing's 100% guaranteed in life, right? Except death and taxes. But saying it could be, you know, not further from the truth can be applied for two citizens that think there is fraud. And maybe more. I don't know if anybody here thinks it's fraud. I don't. So just because two people say it doesn't make it so. There's been no proof of it. The citizen that's been taking all these right to know is actually, was wound up about some alcohol that was purchased and had to do a right to know on it. And it turned out, it was for the Black Heritage Trail event with Mrs. Newcomb and the celebration we had over at Holman Stadium. Nothing nefarious, nothing fraudulent. Nobody's drinking at work upstairs. The mayor doesn't have a case of champagne under his desk, right? No one's drunk now, right? So I think, you know, just because you say something in public, doesn't make it true. Just because you say something on social media, doesn't make it true. And, you know, you can come up here and you can make a speech about an award someone got, but you're leaving out all the cases she lost against the city. You're leaving out that she sued police officers. Police officers that every single one of us here has said we support. She sued two of them, including the mayor, including the CFO. Those cases were thrown out, or at least most of it was thrown out, okay? Where is that part? Where is the money that she's cost the city? I didn't see here that in that speech. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is because you come in here and you make a speech, and you say all these things, and you say, "Public, hear this." Well, public, hear the other side of it. There's two sides for every story. You can't just come in here and say, "This is this," and that makes it fact. It's not. And, you know, I've had enough of it. I've had enough of people saying stuff that's just not true. You know, it's wrong, and I'm going to tell you the truth every time. And all of them in, they decided there was no fraud. If you think there's fraud, sue the city for the 21st time, right? Or find someone that's going to investigate more and find it. I'm sure it's in there somewhere. Maybe it's in the liquor cabinet.
I want to send my condolences also to Jessica Brown and her family and their loss. Wish Alderman Moran a happy birthday. And that's all I have. Committee announcements. Alderman Lopez.
We have a Human Affairs Committee on Monday. I know that Tuesday's joint committee is a little more exciting to some. But on Monday, in addition to our regular business, we're also getting presentations from a number of the sober housing and recovery programs in the city so we can get a better understanding of how many people they're serving, what kind of programs are available. I would encourage all Aldermen to attend or very least view it, because this is information constituents approach us with. Typically, they'll come to us when they couldn't figure out where to start with something. And if we're able to point them in the direction of useful resources and make good referrals, you're going to hopefully see a lot less people struggling to make ends meet or to deal with crises. I think it starts with prevention, and part of that is us all being educated as public leaders so that we can give accurate information out. And if some of these organizations need guidance or support from the city, being aware that the city does provide that and being able to point towards the specific departments that can be helpful is also very, very, very useful. Thank you.
Other committee announcements. Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the October 10th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:33 PM. Thank you, everyone.